Good morning. Welcome. Today is, I have to think, Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education. It does not say this here, but we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance this morning. My Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice.
For all. Thank you. Okay, good morning. We are going to start with, we're going to go right into business of the Board. And we can discuss comments along the way, if that's the way we want to do it. Or Ms. Goodman, did you want to open with something? Or did you want to open after we start the agenda?
I could start because, can I talk about the budget now? Or do we wait till we accept it?
Of course, go right ahead.
So I just want to say a few things. So first of all, on behalf of myself and our staff and students, I want to thank the community for the support that they gave us in passing the budget last night. The budget plan is focused on the 2021 school year, and it provides for small class size for our students, which is important for their academic and emotional support, always. But especially in recent events with COVID-19, and the trajectory of the pandemic is still unclear. And that's why we also need the small class size beyond the academic and social support. Our children really need to have the connections to their teachers. Much of the decreases in the budget had to do with administrative overhead, and without affecting our students or their programs. But I also want to say something about the administrators that are leaving us. They have made a great impact on the district, and much is here because of their positivity and academic advances. And I particularly want to thank Dr. McDonnell, who really does, when I say positivity, she brings that to the district, she brings the spirit, and she really had a lot to do with what has happened in terms of the Chromebooks and technology in the district and our academic advances. So I thank her very much for all that she's done. It goes without saying that the school district would not be where it was if not for the Board. And I think we have a very committed, very bright and caring Board, and it's been a pleasure to serve with them. And I just want to say something about Michelle Aliseo right now. The gratitude that I feel for her, I actually cannot even really express words, do not express them, and I have only known her for a very short time. Michelle is such a valued member of the Board, and she has brought great financial acuity and understanding of how a district and school functions while she cared passionately about the Tuckahoe Union Free School District. I know this is not a goodbye for Michelle. Michelle is so civic-minded, I know that she will be involved in some other great cause that will have something to do with children too, and she'll probably be leading it in no time. But I really do, but whatever you do, Michelle, I wish you the best of luck. And if you want to take a break from all these years, that would be understandable too. You need a vacation. But never has Michelle stopped, no matter what's been going on. Her care, her love for this district and for its students is apparent. Finally, I want to thank the community, who truly believes that teaching and learning happens in the classroom. Their strong support for students and teachers and programs came out last night. I also want to thank Lauren Truel, who is, as people know, a true professional. And she has such care and professionalism in what she does. She has taken her job so seriously and has done it with such expertise that I can't thank her enough. And for the short time I worked with her, it has been a pure pleasure, and I could not have gotten this far without her. And we owe her a lot of gratitude also. Finally, I want to, of course, congratulate the new Board Trustees. It was, first of all, Pete, congratulations. I'm so, it's a pleasure to work with you again. I really do give you all my congratulations. I think that all the candidates did a great job. I watched the debate, and it was very close, which shows that everybody who ran cared deeply about the school district. But I want to congratulate Lori and tell her that I really do look forward to working with her. And finally, as I watch the loving parents and guardians and support people who are there for the seniors for graduation, I am really grateful to be your superintendent. I know it was a hard year for the seniors, but everybody banded together, and that graduation ceremony, everything, every single student is individualized for us and for the administration. And every student here is special and is loved by the teachers, by all the support staff, and by the administration. And they are loved by their families and other people who support them. So I really do want to thank you for letting me be your superintendent and giving me this opportunity. And finally, I do want to thank the administration, who all banded together to get through this year and get through this budget. Special thanks to Le Lou. We worked very closely on this, and I could not have done it without you. I'm so glad you're staying for another year before you retire. And again, thanks to the school board community and the parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you.
Michelle, I'd love to have a few comments. Could we do that, or want to do it at the end, or now? I know I don't have any comment period, but I do have a few comments myself, and that's okay.
Go ahead, Pete.
All right?
Sure.
First of all, I wanted to also, everything that Amy said was great, but I also wanted to make a comment about the high school graduations. I've been checking in, and I've been tuning in, and I think they're fantastic. I think they're going really, really well. Obviously, it's not everybody's first choice, but I can't imagine a better second choice. I just can't imagine it. And I just really wanted to most commend Ms. Goodman and Dr. Linehan and Scott DeBellas and everybody who's out there putting that time in. It's a tremendous amount of time that you all are putting in to put this on. I mean, it's like a 15 hours plus. It just shows your commitment. It shows how much you care. It shows how much, how hard you're trying to make this a memorable experience. So I really don't want that to get lost, because I know it seems like a quick ceremony to everybody individually, but for you guys, you're out there for a very, very long time. Thank God the weather's been nice. That's awesome. But really, really commendable, and thank you very much for doing that. I also wanted to thank Dr. McDonald and Lauren Truel for their years of service here at Tuckahoe. They've both been great and both been very helpful to the Board in a lot of different ways, so I wanted to thank them. Obviously, Lauren's commitment was very well evidenced by last night and how much time she put into that and how diligent she was being. It was very clear to watch that, if you tuned into the live streaming. So that's just been the way she's been from the beginning. So thank you very much to both of them, and good luck to them in their new endeavors. And then lastly, I also want to mention, thank you very much to the community for supporting the budget. That's great. It's a great budget, and I'm really happy that I got the support that it deserved. So that's awesome. And the last thing, last but not least, most importantly for me, is I also too wanted to acknowledge Michelle Aliseo's time on the Board and just express my gratitude and appreciation for her nine years of just remarkable service to this Board. Having done this now for one term, looking back on the amount of work and time and effort that goes into just one term, to times that by three, is just really hard to even comprehend. It really is. And, and you look, you can, you can serve on the Board, and you can show up to Board meetings, and you can kind of just be present, or you could be Michelle Aliseo, which is you give it your all, 100% of what you have, and that's what she's done for nine years. And as a result of that, this district is in a better place than it was when she came on. And it's because of her. It absolutely is because of her. We were not in a great financial place when she came on, and now we are. And because of that, and largely because of her actions and her commitment, we are now in a position to do great things. And we have been in a position to do great things for the last couple of years, and we can't lose sight of how we got there. And she's a huge part of that. And for me, she's an inspiration for me as a Board member, and she's a person, she's a bar that I'm going to measure myself by going forward. So I'm going to miss her. And, well, she's not going to be gone, we're still going to be friends, obviously, but, and she's taking up golf, by the way. That's what she's doing with her spare time. So apparently that's what's going on out there. She's playing golf. But I just want to thank her for her service and just commend her. And you know, for those of us who work with Michelle on a close basis, just know how absurd some of the things that were said about her last year, about, you know, conflicts of interests and not having the best interest of students in mind, all those really silly accusations that were made. If you work with her like we do, like I do, you know how preposterous that is. You know how ridiculous that is, because all she does, everything that she did was from a place of what's better for the district, what's better for the kids, all kids, everybody. That's how she, that's how she kind of looked at everything. What is best for all kids, all the time. Never wavered on that at all. So again, thank you very much, Michelle, for your service, and congratulations on nine years of remarkable service. That's all I have.
I wanted to say something, and once again, I should speak first, because Pete took a lot of what I wanted to say, but I'm just going to try to be quick. I ditto all those things that he said. And really, for those of you who are attending the graduation, I've been watching them, and to make every kid feel and every family feel like that you're doing that for the first time, because I've watched it, and I say, wow, it's amazing how none of that enthusiasm, excitement, and the care that you are speaking with all administrators that are involved in it, to me, it was amazing to watch. So you know, they're doing a wonderful job, and like Pete said, it's definitely the best second choice that you could have. For Lauren and Ellen, it's been an absolute pleasure to like work with you alongside of you. And I have to agree with Amy that Ellen does have a certain enthusiasm that Ellen brings, which, you know, definitely can sort of lift you up. So I know wherever she goes, she's going to bring that with her. And Lauren, she's been absolute pleasure to work with and guide us along our way and things like that. And I wish her the best of luck. And for Michelle, I mean, she's the reason that I sit on this Board, and I, it was, I'm not going to cry, but she is the reason that I sit on this Board, and it's her care of students that made me want to be part of this. And I think Pete is so right, saying that the reason we are where we are today is because of her. And all those things said about her can't be more wrong. Her first and foremost has always been for these kids. And for, secondly, for watching out what's best for this community. And I only hope to do as good as I can in my last year's service here as she has done for her past three. And I do know with the Board we have now, we are following in your footsteps, and I want you to know that we are going to make you proud. And you will be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Okay.
Michelle, I want to say something too. So I want to say, first, I was the election chairperson and spent a lot of time last night at the school. And I think Lauren deserves a tremendous amount of credit for making sure that this was a very meticulous, fair, and ethical process in this unprecedented time. And everybody who was there last night really took care in what they were doing, and that's why it took so long, and we were at the school till 1:00 a.m. I want to thank the community especially for supporting our school and the budget. I think it's a testament to our administration and to what's to come. And I hope that the fact that we had over 1,600 ballots is not a fluke just because it was a mail-in ballot. I hope it's foretelling for what the future holds with community involvement and participation in our schools, because it is so, so important. So I just want to thank everybody who participated last night, because it was an incredibly long and tedious night. Michelle, I'm also here because of you. I, you know, grieved my taxes, and that's how we first met. I could cry for other reasons. I'm kidding. You really.
Like the fact that your taxes weren't due, so let's just start with that.
Exactly. Anyway, no, you have, you're, you are definitely a bar to set a standard for, and you are certainly somebody who has donated all of your time, efforts, and energy to really do the right thing by our students and our schools. And I've really learned a lot working with you over the last year. I am not a golfer, it's so boring, but they do have cute outfits, so there's a shopping opportunity for you now that schools are, stores are open. Hopefully, schools are open too. So good luck and enjoy your gardening. I know you're doing that now too. And it's all very well deserved, because I've served one year, and it feels like at least 19. And I also want to congratulate everybody who ran in the election, because I think that that is really what democracy is all about. And everybody obviously had passion and love for the district and wanting to do better for the kids, and that's why we are all here, to make Tuckahoe the best school it could possibly be. So, and obviously, I want to congratulate Lori Gerald and Pete Cassin. It is truly an honor to work next to you. You are one of the most fair, ethical, methodical, and thoughtful people I know. So I really look forward to the next couple of years serving with you.
I'll keep this quick. Sorry, Michelle, I'm going to go last. So first, I just want to thank the community for passing the budget. I'm excited to keep moving forward, one year on the Board. And as I'll echo everyone, I can't even imagine three terms, let alone finishing one. But I want to wish Lauren and Ellen the best in their new endeavors, and it was a pleasure working with them. Lauren did a great job last night, as she always does, a true professional, and we will miss Ellen's laughter. Lastly, and I'll keep it, Michelle, I met Michelle, I think, at a Village meeting, and she was up at the podium going line by line over a budget, and I thought, wow, who is this person that like spent all this time going through a spreadsheet? And that's who she is. She really has taught me a lot in the year that I've been here. She is a true professional, who his heart and soul is put into everything she does. And we will miss her knowledge, her history, and her passion. She never takes anything less than 100%, and it's commendable to have done that for three terms. And I know my students, my children have been in the district since Michelle's been on the Board, and I will say that she's always fought for my children and everybody's children. And it has been a consistent goal of hers. And I want to thank you, Michelle, for all that you've done. I want to thank you for all that you have taught me and as well as other Board members. And I know that you'll be involved, and you'll be up at some podium soon looking at spreadsheets in between talking. So best of luck and enjoy your Board retirement. And I will, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. I don't have anything prepared to say, so I'm just gonna say it as it is. I, number one, couldn't thank this community more for the support of the budget and last night's vote. Number one, the fact that we had, I believe, 615, 1,600 ballots to count. But the result of the budget vote, I think, is so important, because over 1,000 community members supported the budget that was put together by our new superintendent, Ms. Goodman, and this Board, with this Board's approval. And I think that is what we've been working for over the years, is to build that type of community support over our plan of the future of the district. And to have to put a budget together, Le Lou and Amy Goodman, under these challenging fiscal times, but over a financial and secure foundation that we have built, I think this goes to show you that we are so on the right path. And that support from the community on this budget just showed me that this is a community that supports where we are going. And that just speaks volumes to me, because that is what we've been trying to do, is to build support, confidence, trust from this community on the plan of the future of this district. The financial road has been difficult. There is no doubt about that. When I came on this Board nine years ago, I think I used this word many times in the beginning, I felt that we were in a crossroads, that the decisions we made at that time going forward were really going to map out the future. And I honestly do not feel that this district is any longer at a crossroads. It is really on the path to great things for many, many reasons, and the work of many people. And I could not even, and I will not even begin to thank everybody along the way who's contributed. They know who they are. And I just feel that this is a Board with a leadership that is going to do great things. I could not leave feeling any more confident that each of you, the Board that I have served with, and including the new addition of Lori Gerald, has a passion for education, but not just education, but an innovative way of teaching for the future, and that is going to make the difference for this district. I would also like to say, for the graduation, this individualized attention on each student is exactly what we are about. And I think that that is, it's unfortunate that this class could not graduate the way they wanted to with each other, embraced by each other. But it is just, I can't, I don't think it's coincidental that they are leaving with this individualized attention and taking with them everything that Tuckahoe has given them. And I just think that if we can keep that vision in our minds moving forward, because only when we give the attention to each and every student will we truly succeed. We have a staff that has been doing that for years. I know that personally from my own children and the education they received here, and the success that they have gotten. And I just believe that when students truly are cared for, number one, shown that they're cared for, are given opportunity, and it must be equal and fair to every student, and that is what I have fought for for nine years, and I know that this Board will continue to do that. I also want to encourage the parents that you must, must, must participate in your children's education, no matter what form you find to take it in. It may not be serving on the PTA, it may not be serving on this Board, it may not be showing up at Board meetings, but you must be the advocate and the voice for your child, and know that you have a Board and a superintendent and leadership that will support that. But it is so important. I did this at a very early age. It is not easy when your kids are young to find the time to do it, but we all find our priorities, and I truly believe no time greater than ever, I do not want to sound like I am, there is no greater time than ever that education will be the answer to the future success of our students and honestly, for this country. So I believe that there needs to be reform in education on such a big way, but we in Tuckahoe can do that, because we are small, we have the leadership, we have the passion, and we will make a difference for every student. And I could not be more proud of this Board that I have served with and many of the people I have served on past Boards with, because again, nobody knows, everybody who serves on a Board knows, no individual Board member has the power to do anything. We need to work together, and I know that you all will continue to work together to get things done. I want to congratulate Pete, because I agree with what Teresa has said. Your integrity and your really desire to do what's right and fair shows in every decision you make. And continue with that, and the district is very, very, very lucky to have you serve another term, and I just know that you will do good things. And all of you working together, and I know Lori will bring so much to this Board, and it is needed, and I believe we are so on the right path. And I say "we" because while I'm not on this Board anymore, I am part of this school community, and we all still need to be part of this school community. So thank you all, and, okay, thank you. Okay. Is that everything? Everybody said something? Okay. All right, we're going to now move on to business of the Board. Number one, accept results of the vote. Resolve to accept the results of the annual budget vote and trust the election. Budget, yes. 1,088. No, 414. Candidates, Scott Bogetti, 654. Peter Cassin, 832. Lori Gerald, 658. Dina Morgan, 647. Proposition, yes. 1,031. No, 313. Is there a motion? Teresa, second. Cynthia, discussion. I'm sorry, can I just add two things that I did not bring up? Number one is the work of Lauren Truel throughout this process, not only last night, but throughout the entire, basically, you know, what has happened during this pandemic, how it affected our district and every district in the state of New York when it came to this election, how she educated herself, spoke to colleagues in other districts, worked with Albany, worked with BOCs, worked with everybody to make sure that this was done right. And I have to applaud her in all of her efforts over her years here. Her professionalism is without a doubt her number one characteristic, and we very much appreciate it. The other thing that did not get discussed this morning, which really is very, very important, is the yes vote on the proposition. The proposition was for a capital reserve. This Board and previous Boards that I have worked with have been trying to get together a capital reserve fund to be on a proposition and be passed by this community. I think it is another part of a sound fiscal plan, and I also think it just is what we teach our children, that you save your money for what you want to spend it on. And we, when we can show the community that we are being responsible, that we are putting money away for capital projects, things we know for sure we will need, I think it is how we build trust in our community, that we are being fiscally smart and we are saving, and we are saving for things that we need for the students. And so I love this. I'm thrilled that it passed and that the community understood it and has given us this opportunity to build a reserve for future capital projects for the students of the district. So that's wonderful.
Yep. So I totally agree with that, by the way, and I'm really excited about that proposition. It kind of got lost in the shuffle a little bit, so I'm really glad that the community saw the wisdom in that. So that's great. And I also just wanted to piggyback what you said about Lauren. I know you mentioned her before, but you know, the governor's extension, people should realize this and understand this, the governor's extension that was given was because most school districts were not on time. We were. We actually didn't need the extension. I think the extension wound up helping Malins getting it, get in, and also I think it was a good thing for us too. But Lauren and Ms. Goodman being so on the ball with this stuff, we actually didn't need that extension. The rest of the school districts, a lot of school districts in Westchester County and the New York State needed it, because they just didn't have their act together. They didn't get things out in time, they didn't have their ballots printed in time. So it's just another testament to Lauren and how good she is at this, and how ahead of the eight ball she always is, and on top of everything that she always is. So definitely going to be a miss there.
All in favor? Teresa? Thank you. Okay. Number two, appoint a payroll consultant. Resolve to appoint Kim Cook as payroll consultant from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, at a rate of $50 per hour, not to exceed $5,000. Is there a motion? Teresa, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Number three, accepted donation. Whereas the Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to Tuckahoe High School from the estate of Lillian Kurtz, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved that the district shall accept the donation from the estate of Lillian Kurtz in the amount of $55,590.60. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, discussion. Thank you to the Kurtz family, and I am sure that we will put that donation to good use for the good of all students. Thank you. All in favor? Number four, approved expenditure of undesignedated fund balance. Whereas the June 1st, 2020- Whereas the June first, two thousand twenty, whereas on June first, two thousand twenty, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District approved a memorandum of agreement with the bargaining team for Tuckahoe Teachers Association, Tuckahoe Teachers Association. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby determines that the retroactive sums to be paid pursuant to the memorandum agreement with the bargaining team for Tuckahoe Teachers Association as contractual legal obligations or ordinary contingent expenses of the school district. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the expenditure of up to four hundred thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance for the payment in whole or in part of such retroactive sums. And be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent for business are hereby authorized and empowered to individually take all actions necessary to implement the purposes of this resolution. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Peter, discussion. I will just say that I want to thank, um, the Tuckahoe Teachers Association in our negotiations, um, and for, um, the coming to agreement on this contract. Unfortunately, because of the pandemic, it was not, um, resolved in the matter that we had all hoped for when we set in, out to, um, to resolve to, um, have a four-year contract. But I do want to thank them because they did understand, um, where we are, um, the, the financial and fiscal uncertainties, the fact that the governor has stated that there could be three times in this school year alone that, that state aid could be cut from our budget, um, is, is, uh, just unheard of. So, uh, I want to thank them because, um, they have done what is right for the students of this district in this settlement and they put the students first. And I want to thank them.
Michelle, I'm still, um, want to make sure that I'm clear and the community's clear. And Lee, you can help me out with this. Um, you know, this undesignated fund balance that we're using the four hundred thousand, um, it, it's actually, even though some, some expenses went above what we expected, that use of that money was already sort of budgeted for in, in, in last year's budget. In other words, we had already put into our last year's budget that we may need to use up to one point seven of, of fund balance in order to keep the budget balanced. So that this four hundred thousand is within that amount that was allocated or planned to be used possibly. Is that correctly?
That's correct. It's not in addition to, it's part of that. It just gives the, um, district the ability to utilize the funds in that accounting kind of method. Um, you're, um, that's, basically that's correct.
Great, okay. I'm sure we're at it. Okay. Good to go.
All in favor? Number five, fund balance resolution. Resolve the Tuckahoe Union Free School District retain an amount not to exceed one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars of the two thousand nineteen, twenty year-end fund balance as an unappropriated fund balance for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Appropriate two million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars of the two thousand nineteen, twenty year-end fund balance to reduce taxes in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget. Increase the tax sorciarity reserve fund by an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand. Increase the employee benefit accrued liability reserve fund by an amount not to exceed seven thousand, five hundred. Increase the retirement contributions reserve fund, ERS, by an amount not to exceed fifty thousand. And increase the retirement contributions reserve sub-fund, TRS, by an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Teres, discussion. Lee, did you just want to go over that a little bit because there's a lot there?
Uh, so this is a resolution that we do every year at the end of the school year. It, um, accomplishes several things. First of all, excuse me, it puts, um, aside the, uh, four percent unrestricted fund balance that we're allowed to maintain from our reserves. So it appropriates the correct amount based on our approved budget. Um, secondly, it appropriates the amount that the Board of Education had discussed and placed into the budget to balance the budget using fund balances that we have saved over time, if necessary. And that's the amount, the two million, one twenty-nine, six-ten, that we are setting aside is to reduce the taxpayers' obligation for next year's budget. We use that if necessary. And thirdly, uh, the last is just an, um, open, uh, resolution to, if there are any funds remaining at the end of the school year, when we close our books and when our auditors review our books, if there remains any, uh, funds at the end of the school year from both the revenue and the expenditure side that are not part of the first two bullets, the first two pieces, those can be placed with your permission into the various funds. And basically, um, the amounts that we request are the amounts that base, that we are typically spending in a year for tax sorciaries or for the other, um, funds. So if funds are available, we wish to replenish them.
Yes, that's my only question, Lee. So with the, the, the three amounts that we're putting into the three different retirement funds, um, I know in last year's budget, we were, we were planning on putting a hundred thousand in, I believe. But this is, this is going to exceed that, uh, quite a bit. So what, am I right about that? And, and is that, what, what other options did we have? Could we have taken some of that money above the hundred thousand and just transferred it back over to this year? Or, or, you know, what's, why, why are we doing, why are we putting those funds that we were originally planning to put?
Um, we're allowed to fund those at a higher level. There are, um, state regulations as to how high we can fund them and it's based on a percentage of salaries in each category. So, um, they're really just open, um, amounts that if we did, we would first, most likely replenish the tax cert reserve since we are spending monies out of the tax cert reserve this year. The other three, um, the other three reserves that we're looking to fund, if we do have additional expenses, I'm sorry, if we have additional surplus monies left over, are just our other three reserves. And we're looking just to in, increase the financial stability of those reserves. We do spend monies out of those based on each year. For example, um, employee benefits accrued liabilities, we spend a small amount each year. So we're looking to just keep those healthy if we have monies left over. And then after we replenish our tax cert reserves.
But I know on the tax, on the tax cert, you, you shoot the thirty-five percent of what's outstanding. But what, what do you shoot, what's the measure that you shoot for on those retirement funds? Is there, is there a number that you're trying to hit every year?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me unfortunately, but it's, I think it's approximately two percent of our salaries. I can get that exact number for you. So, um, if we do have funds available, um, those would be places that it would make sense to use. And then what we can use those for is in years where the, um, pension expenses go higher than had it been in previous years, we can smooth out tax increases by utilizing funds from those reserves um, to pay for the increased cost to the pension funds that the employee, the employer needs to pay.
Okay. So just so the community sort of understands, we, we had allocated last year that we may use up to one point, I think almost one point eight million of, of unassigned fund balance. You're actually thinking we're going to need four hundred of that, that's part of this resolution, to move that four hundred over. The rest of it, uh, you're going to take some of that money, you're going to put, you're going to put it, that we didn't need, put it into some of these reserve funds and the rest of it's carrying, carrying over to, to unassigned fund balance for this year. But we're going to use a big chunk of that to balance next year's budget and so on.
Right. So there may be very, um, small amounts left over. After all that's done, we won't know probably until the summer exactly what those numbers look like. This gives us the opportunity, if there are funds available, to move them into other reserves.
Thank you.
All in favor? Number six, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve an education services agreement with Edu, Edu Care for virtual education programs and courses for the period of July first, two thousand twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one in an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars. Is there a motion? Teres, second. Peter, discussion. All in favor? Number seven, approve a side letter. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a side letter of agreement dated June seventeenth, two thousand twenty, by and between the district and the CSEA and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Teres, second. Peter, discussion. All in favor? Number eight, approve the personnel items. Approve, resolve to approve personnel items, A through C. Is there a motion? Teres, second. Peter, discussion. All in favor? Okay, now we just come to adjournment. I, I just, if you don't mind, if I just want to say one more thing before I adjourn. Um, I just want to put on the record that I want to thank my family, my three children, um, who at times have felt that I put a thousand kids before them. And so I want to just thank them because I have given a lot and, uh, a lot of my time away from them. But I think it's the best lesson you can teach your kids that, uh, you know, to have a passion and to have a desire to serve your community. So, um, nine years well spent and thank you, but I, I did want to acknowledge my three children. So thank you. Okay, motion to adjourn. Peter, second. Laura, discussion. All in favor? Bye. Have a good day, everybody. Be well, be safe.
Thank you. Thank you.